Bottom line for the adults in the room, our students are under a spotlight that we really don't fully understand. I mean, think about it. When you were in middle school, and you did something dumb, and you did, that's why we call it middle school, okay? That's where most of the dumb things happen. When you did something dumb, maybe six people knew about it. A couple of them were your good friends, they weren't gonna tell anybody. A couple of them, nobody listened to anyway, so it wasn't a big deal. And it blew over pretty quick. Today, when a student does something dumb, everybody knows about it, even before the day is up, and there's very possibly a video. Like, maybe they fell down the stairs, and a student was taping a friend at the bottom, and here they come falling down the stairs on video, and then it's shared, and it's uploaded, and everybody sees it, including parents. I've had students tell me, "My mom just texted me and asked me if I was okay, 'cause she saw the video of me falling, that happened 45 minutes ago." It's crazy, the amount of pressure that that puts on our kids, that they're on a spotlight like that. Thankfully, nobody made a permanent record of my middle school days, because there were some bad ones. And nobody was uploading them to the internet, mainly because Al Gore hadn't invented it yet at that point, right? And some of you will get that later. But there was no permanent record of what I did. Today, our students are living on a stage, even if they don't have social media, because their friends are talking about it and uploading it. So when we understand this spotlight, it changes a little bit of what we do. And when we're aware of it, we can better manage what we're doing with that spotlight. But it's not just a student problem. I have student presentations for this. But I also have corporate presentations, and I train teachers and superintendents, and school resource officers, on this stuff. Because social media is not just a student-based problem. I'm here to tell you, cops, teachers, and CEOs are blowing up their lives with social media, because they don't fully understand how the technology works. Case in point, we'll talk about a case scenario in just a minute. Here's what I liken it to. How many of you have actually taught one of your kids to drive? Raise your hands. Okay, that would be all the gray-haired people in the room. I'm just kidding, just kidding. I have a 13-year-old daughter, I have tons of gray hair, and I know when we do this, it's gonna go all white. Because seriously, she can't tie her shoes sometimes, and she's a few years from driving a car, and that scares me, okay? She's, will always be my baby, and I'm gonna turn the keys of a large vehicle over to her and send her on the road one of these days. But here's what I know. When that day comes, when she turns 16, I'm gonna spend a ton of time like that, in the passenger seat of the car, teaching her how to safely use it. The first lesson is gonna be in a parking lot with no lights around, no nothing, in the middle of nowhere. And she'll be lucky if we turn the car on during that first lesson. Because that first lesson is gonna be how to buckle your seatbelt, how to adjust your mirrors. This is an appropriate level for the radio, and this is where the radio shouldn't be, and if it's too loud, I'll take it out, 'cause it's my radio, right? And all that safety stuff, before we even start the car. The second lesson, we're gonna go five, 10 miles an hour tops. We're gonna stop a lot, and we're gonna teach her how to turn safely, how to check mirrors, all of that stuff. And it's gonna spend hundreds of hours like this. Why? Because as a police officer, I can't tell you the number of cars I've pulled out of ditches. Some of those ditches are small enough, you can back the car out. You ask the driver, "Are you okay?", and they say, "Yeah, I'm just a little shaken up", but they get in the car and they drive home. They drive differently than they did before they got in the ditch. It changes their behavior. You see, some ditches are small. But there are some ditches I can take you to where there will always be cars in the bottom of them, 'cause it's too expensive to get the cars out. The people came out in bags, but the car stays down there. You see, some ditches are so big, we really can't get you out of them. And I don't want my babies in either one of those ditches. So we're gonna spend a ton of time like this. The reason this is in here is too many of us have tossed the keys to the internet to our kids, and said, "Good luck", and we have never sat next to them and taught them how the technology works, and how to appropriately use it. And some of you are like, "I don't know how to use it", Google it. You fake it until you can Google it. Your kid comes home talking about something, "Yeah, I heard about that, that's cool", isn't it? And then Google it when they're not looking. And now all of a sudden, you know stuff, right? Fake it until you can Google it. That's what I live by, okay? My point is, there's ditches along the internet as well. Some of them are small, and they do minor damage. But some of them, if our students do it the wrong way, they can end up in a ditch that it's really hard to get them back out of. So when my daughter started her social media career, we didn't start with Facebook. Because when she started, she was only about 12 and a half, and Facebook, you have to be 13 to use it. I know, they actually have rules. Some of you are like, "Well, I have kids that are on Facebook", they're your kids, not mine. We follow rules at our house, that's what we do, right? So we didn't start with Facebook, and quite honestly, most of her friends aren't on Facebook. Because what's on Facebook right now that kids don't care about? Parents. You wanna make something really uncool with kids, fill it full of parents. That's what Facebook is right now, 'cause parents get on Facebook, and they do really important things, like harvest their crops, right? And they recruit people for their mafia. And right now, they're crushing the fire out of some candy, aren't they? I mean, my Facebook news feed, so-and-so's on level 782, a candy crush. I'm like, "That's awesome, get a job", right? You should not have that kind of time. And so our kids aren't on Facebook. She started with Twitter, 'cause that's what I let her get, 'cause it was a stripped-down version of Facebook. And to this day, she's still not allowed to share photos of people. She can share photos of the dog, photos of the bracelets she makes, photos of whatever, but not people. That's the line in the sand we have right now. Eventually, we'll get past that. But that's where we are, teaching her how to drive the internet. And when we set up Twitter, I sat next to her and showed her how to work it. And I have her password. Why? 'Cause she uses my phone to access it. Now, it's in a pretty pink case, and she carries it 24/7, and it's her phone, but it's on my bill. And she made the mistake of one time when I told her I needed to see her phone. She goes, "Hang on, I'm doing something", I said, "No, I need to see it", she goes, "Hang on, I'm doing something", I said, "Give me the phone", she goes, "Dad, it's my phone", "Oh, sweet girl, no, it's not. I'm sorry, I gave you that impression, but it's mine, and I will take it", right? That's also why my phone charges next to my bed at night. The phone that we let her use charges in our bedroom. Because nothing good happens with technology in a kid's bedroom after bedtime. Nothing good. So it charges in my bedroom, because I know the kids that are dealing with post-traumatic stress disorder, because they're under stress 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because of their social media. During bedtime, my daughter's job is to sleep. I'm also secretly hoping that some boy is gonna text her at 2:00 in the morning, 'cause I wanna return that text, 'cause that would be fun, right? "Listen, young man, it's 2:00 in the morning. I carry a gun for a living. Have a good night", and then he'll see her the next day at school, be like, "Man, your dad's crazy", she goes, "I know he's crazy, I live with him", and that boy will treat her differently than he did before. But I want her to be sleeping at night, and socializing during the day. And it's my phone, it charges where I want it to. Because when social media is done wrong, you get a situation like this. Let me set this video up for you. About a year ago, Chick-fil-A's president said something that made him very unpopular with a certain segment of our population, right? And as a response to that, some people were boycotting Chick-fil-A. It's fine, it's free country, shop where you wanna shop. But they also decided they were gonna go through the drive-thru and get a free water, that's it, all around the country. And they were going to take money from Chick-fil-A by only getting free waters, and really hurt their bottom line. This guy videotaped his trip through the drive-thru checking it.
Well, I'm waiting in line, I'm next in line, I'm pretty excited about my free water. I also see like, a group of 30 college-age students over there. I'm wondering if they're doing a sit-in. I'm so excited, I might just join them. Let's see what happens with my free water, and I think I might just say a few words too. Let's see. It's been a long line, there's a long line of cars too, I don't know if you can see, but it's, you know, people have to have their Chick-fil-A, anti-gay breakfast sandwich. Mmm, always tastes better when it's full of hate. Mmm, yeah, love it. Come on, I want my free water. Come on. I really hope those students over there are gonna do a sit-in. I think they are. It just makes sense. Here I go. Hey, how you doing?
Fine.
Good. Is this my free water?
It is.
Awesome. You know why I'm getting the free water, right?
Yeah.
Because Chick-fil-A is a hateful corporation.
I disagree. I wouldn't, we don't treat any of our customers differently, we don't...
I know, but you guys, but the corporation gives money to hate groups. Hate groups, just because people wanna kiss another guy. Sorry?
I have to say neutral on this subject. My personal belief should be in the workplace.
Yeah, I believe that too. I don't believe corporations should be giving money to hateful groups. Totally understand. I'll take my water.
It's my pleasure to serve you always.
Oh yeah, of course. I'm glad that I can take a little bit of money from Chick-fil-A, and maybe less money to hate groups. Have a great day.
We're always happy to serve every...
I don't know how you live with yourself and work here, I don't understand it. This is a horrible corporation with horrible values. You deserve better. You deserve better. Rachel, you deserve better, okay?
I hope you have a really nice day.
I will. I just did something really good, I feel purposeful. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm a nice guy by the way, and I'm totally heterosexual. I'm not, not gay in me, I just can't stand the hate, you know? It gotta stop. It's gotta stop, guys. Stand up.
Have a nice day.
All right, see you, guys.
So right there, he uploaded his video, 'cause he felt purposeful. He just did something good. He's fighting the man, so to speak. And I would imagine he was very surprised to see it on the national news, because that's where I saw it. The video he was sharing as a snicker with his friends or something, feeling like he was purposeful or did something good that day, went viral. And it went all around the world. And the video that, when the kids see that, they see that as an alternative to, or a way to air grievance. "Well, I'll just make a video and I'll upload it", because that video has millions of views. It's been seen a lot. What they didn't see was the rest of the story, because that guy was on his way to work. That guy was Adam Smith. Adam Smith is the chief financial officer of Vante. Vante is a multimillion-dollar medical equipment sales company. I have some friends that do medical sales as a salesperson, and they make pretty good money. The chief financial officer, he's getting paid. When Adam Smith's employer saw this video, they promptly fired him. And then they released this statement. They said, "The actions of Mr. Smith do not reflect our corporate values in any manner. Vante is an equal opportunity company with a diverse workforce which holds diverse opinions. We respect the right of our employees and all Americans to hold and express their personal opinions. However, we also expect our company officers to behave in a manner commensurate with their position and in a respectful fashion that conveys these values of civility with others." And some of you are upset right now, because he wasn't working when that happened. It's a private company. I ask you this, whether or not you agree with his position, if you disagree with a company, losing your mind for the world to see on the 20-year-old drive-thru employee is not going to change that company's stance at all. There are better ways to air grievances. And if I were looking for an employee today and had to choose between Adam Smith and Rachel, I would hire Rachel every day of the week and twice on Sunday, because she knows how to deal with difficult people. She was a rock star. Chick-fil-A finds these kids somewhere, I don't know how. But every time I go to Chick-fil-A, some 12-year-old takes my order, and they make eye contact, and they're respectful, and they say, "My pleasure", and they say anything else, "I can get you". I can't get my 13-year-old to clean her room, and they're killing it at Chick-fil-A with 12- and 13-year-old kids, right? My point is, Adam Smith didn't think about how the technology might work out for him. He just uploaded a video. Now, we at the Nicholasville Police Department have a four-page social media policy that says, "I can be punished for things I post online even when I'm not working", because I can't be expected to be spreading hate online, and then come to work and wear a badge and a gun. And you're like, "Well, that's not right, you only work 40 hours a week". I'm free to work elsewhere, but if I wanna work for Nicholasville, I agree to that policy. And I'm fine with it. And what Adam Smith said at the end of the video about not being gay, he actually has a wife and two kids, who lost their only source of income because he uploaded that video on his way to work. To me, social media shows a lack of integrity better than anything we have going. Integrity being the quality or condition of being whole or undivided, a complete person. Bottom line, social media will destroy our boxes. Let me explain that. We used to be able to have a work box, kind of in our head, that when we got to work, we would open the work box and we would operate out of that box mentally. And we would say and do things at work that we would never say and do things at home, because we were in a different box in our heads. Then we would get home and we would open up our home box, and the people at work wouldn't even recognize the home person and vice versa. That's how life was. And some of us, we had a third box. I call it my special occasion box, or my church box. That's the box that allows us to scream at the kids all the way to church, do a windshield wiper beating while we're driving, right? And if you haven't done it, you just haven't lived yet. You know, the windshield wiper beating, hoping to connect with a kid, because they're out of control. And then you get to church, and what do you tell them? "Knock it off, wipe your tears, we're at church". And then you walk inside, and somebody says, "How are ya?", "I'm blessed", "So blessed, brother", "'cause I got that church box open, and I'm a different person in there". Social media destroys those boxes, because Adam Smith's personal box uploaded a video that collided with his professional life, and it blew him everything up. You can either have privacy, or you can have social media, you just can't have both. So you better be the same everywhere you are. When I train kids, I tell them, "Would you want your pastor or your grandmother reading your tweets", because they just might be. My mom has a lady that lives across the street from her, just turned 100 years old. She's on Facebook every day, because she lives by herself, and she can see the grandbabies, the great-grandbabies, and the great-grand, great-great-grandbabies sitting in the comfort of her home. And don't think if she saw one of those kids uploading something they shouldn't, she'd grab them by the ear. I've seen her do it, right? But it destroys our boxes, and when you post it, it's gone, you can't get it back. You just can't. And always assume you're being recorded, because there's a good chance you are. After the Boston bombing last year, I told my wife, "Those guys are on so many video cameras, they can't round them all up fast enough", because I knew people were taking photos, surveillance images were everywhere. I was a little surprised when the FBI posted their pictures and basically said, "Go get them, America, let us know", and that's basically what they did. The hunt was on. And even though it's a tragedy that we lost a police officer in that confrontation, I promise you, they fared better than they would've with the redneck militias that were mounting in eastern Kentucky to go find these fools that attacked America, 'cause they had their picture, and they were going hunting. They just were. You're always being recorded. And if you think about that, it changes how you act. And we as adults can think through that. We need to teach our students, "Would you wanna see this later on the news", 'cause it just might go viral like Adam Smith's video did. And when we're aware of that spotlight, we act differently. I choose to use the spotlight of my social media to help people. That's what I do. But I could also use that social media to tear people down. The media doesn't care. It's the intent of the user that either makes it positive or negative. And I make it my point to train others how to appropriately use social media, because when it's done wrong, and bad decision is piled on top of bad decision, you get a video like this one. Check it out.
New Year's here. Still the same reality. So come on and hide with me. Enough corners for everyone. Side lights. Strangled piss. Right through this park. Thoughts are blurry, and so is the day. Come on. One tired shadow for everyone. Even the ghosts. Get a slice in the first round. Yet one ghost wanders between the worlds. It's a new day. Don't you feel? Change? Still here. Refuse to join the club. Come on, come on. Pull your number. All the other ghosts. Want to play? Still attached to this rotting piece of flesh. Come on, my ghosts. Throw your luggage silverware. Now we've got everything you will ever have a need. Be our guests. Never leave. Fear is just a bad habit. You decide the date. The wrong way to start the party. Be our guests. We've painted all the walls blue. Everything is set up. So don't you hesitate. The bills have all already been paid. Sleeping awake. Drunk and sober. Wasted and broken. Oh, we've got enough glue to fix you. To fix you. It's hard convincing a ghost to die. It's hard convincing a ghost to die. Yeah, we've got the final fix. Solution to everything. So come on, come on, come on and join us. We all like to start the party. Can't you hear the laughter? Yeah, we've got the glue to fix you. Yeah, we got the glue. We can fix you. Yeah, we got everything. Now everything to to fix you. Oh, we will be here too to make you. Perfect, just like we have always been. You don't need the truth, 'cause there's no wrong in here. There's no wrong at all anymore. Anymore. There's justice right. There's justice here.
She said, "I just went and laid in a ditch, and my dad found me." I can't imagine finding one of my babies, bloodied, humiliated, embarrassed, laying in a ditch. I mean, having them not tell me anything about what got them there. You see, my problem is, this didn't happen in a vacuum. Amanda's friends knew this was going on, but nobody did anything to help. And when she got home from her various trips to the hospital, these are the things she found online. They're still out there. I don't find them funny. I don't see the humor in them at all. They're horrible. But that's part of that ditch that she found herself in. And I would love to have Amanda Todd in one of my presentations, so that I could tell her, "Whatever you've done, we can help start pulling you out", but unfortunately, that's not gonna be possible, because Amanda Todd succeeded in killing herself October 2012. And she said at the end of that video, "I need someone". Well, this presentation is called "I Am Someone", and I've been using "I Am Someone" for about four years now, long before Amanda Todd had her issues. If I could've had Amanda Todd in one of my student presentations, I'd tell her information that might change the way she used her media. And it's information that's readily accessible, some scary statistics that I think students middle and high school age need to know. One of them is this. 86% of sexual pics meant for one person are shared. And when I tell that statistic to students, I have high school girls that come up to me, and she's, "My boyfriend's one of the 14", "No, he's not, sweetheart", "He's not, he's probably one of the 86", "'cause at the least, he showed his buddies his phone". And let me be very clear, from a legal standpoint, that's distribution and possession of child pornography, a federal felony offense. And the person that took the photo produced child pornography, a separate felony offense. This is not just a cute pic. This is against federal law. The other statistic I wish more people knew is how big a problem this actually is. Because 44% of high school boys have seen a pornographic image of a classmate on their device. Not a model, not an actress, a classmate. Which means almost half of our high school boys are in possession of child pornography. You need to be checking phones, you need to be educating your kids, because it's against federal law. And it ruins... Because it's against federal law, and it ruins lives. Forget the law. Amanda Todd could care less about the law. She just wanted someone to care. She wanted someone to help. And she didn't find anybody. Which brings me back to where we started. Whenever I use social media, I use it with these two in mind. And I always ask myself, "Would I be okay if these girls repeated whatever I post?" It's a pretty good filter, and as parents will tell you, they will repeat what you do no matter what you say. Which is why you've heard things from the backseat that when the three- or four-year-old says them, they're not near as cute as when you said and when you got cut off in traffic. And then you make them promise never to say that again. Because out of their mouths, that sounds different. Social media is the same way. They will do what you do, no matter what you say. And as I'm scrolling through the world of social media, would I speak up if someone was disrespecting them? You better believe it. So why am I okay scrolling past everybody else's babies being disrespected? Everyone is someone's everything. So why do I let it go? Why do I say nothing? So that someone like Amanda Todd does what she did? I'm not okay with that anymore. Which brings us back to where we started. This presentation is called "I Am Someone." Guys, social media gives us great power. But with great power comes great responsibility. It can be used to help a lot of people, or it can be used to hurt a lot of people. All I'm asking for you is to just be someone. Someone that's not okay when things get bad online. Someone that is someone that a kid can talk to when scary things are happening online. And how do you do that, parents? Here's my best advice. Think about when they were two or three, and they fell, and there was blood. You didn't freak out. Because when you freaked out, they freaked out. You told them, "It's okay. It's not a big deal. We'll fix this. It's cool." You made jokes about it, right? You sang songs to them. "It's okay. It's not a big deal." When they come to you with a problem with social media, even if you're absolutely dying inside, you need to be calm. "It's cool. We'll take care of this. It's not a big deal." And you know what I did after I bandaged my girls when they were little and they cut themselves? I pulled them on my lap and I held them and I hugged them and I said, "We got this. It's cool." And what I wouldn't give to pull Amanda Todd on my lap today and say, "We got this. We can fix this. It's not as big a deal as you think." See, I'm a big fan of music, but I can't sing at all. As we wrap up tonight, I'm going to read to you the lyrics by a song called "Super Chick." Before you judge me, I live with three girls, my wife and two daughters. Super Chick is one of the more rockin' girl bands out there, okay? But they have a stretch of lyrics in the middle of their song that talks directly to what we've been talking about today with bullying and with kids feeling like they don't matter. And it goes like this. "Little Mikey D was the one in class who every day got brutally harassed. This went on for years until he decided that never again would he shed another tear. So he walked through the door, grabbed a 4-4 out of his father's dresser drawer, and said, 'I can't take life no more, and like that, life can be lost.'" But this ain't even about that. All of us just sat back and watched it happen, thinking, "It's not my responsibility to solve a problem that isn't even about me." This is our problem. This is just one of the daily scenarios which we choose to close our eyes instead of doing the right thing. If we make a choice to be the voice for those who won't speak up for themselves, how many lives would be saved, changed, and rearranged? Now, it's our time to pick a side. So don't keep walking by not wanting to intervene because you want to exist and never be seen. Let's wake up and change the world. Our time is now. Because it's too late for Amanda Todd. But it's not too late for the students in your life. For you to be the someone that's willing to help them with their problems. If you want to join the movement, it's the website. That's the Twitter handle. If you're not on Twitter, don't get on Twitter just to follow me. But if you are on there, I'd love to have you along for the ride. I do share out information that I'm learning. All of this information is on business cards that I got up here at the end of the night. You can get them. If you want a t-shirt, a wristband, stickers, I've got them for sale. If you don't buy any of my merchandise, we can still be friends. It's just a way that I can help spread this message. So I'll be here all night. If you have questions, come see me. But there's another speaker coming up after me. And I appreciate you guys for bringing me in here, and I appreciate your time and attention. And I hope you have a great night. Thank you.